Okay, thank you. Good morning. As Chair of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees, I will call to order this quarterly meeting of the board. Before we begin, I want to thank Dr. Algais, FLVS leadership, and my fellow board members for the work and preparation you have all put into today's meeting. And as always, I want to recognize and thank our FLVS teachers and staff for the wonderful work you do every day for our students and their families. Now let's proceed with the roll call. Mr. Moore, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Here.
Dr. Tony Arza.
Here.
Mr. Ed Puswoli.
Here.
Ms. Mercy Radcliffe.
Here.
Mr. Rob Canarans. And Dr. John Watret.
Okay, thank you. Next, I will open the floor for any opening remarks from our co-chair and fellow board members. Dr. Arza?
Just good morning, everyone. Thank you to the whole team for preparing us for today's meeting. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Board member Puzoli?
Good morning, everyone. Looking forward to a great meeting.
Thank you. Board member Radcliffe?
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank the entire leadership team, staff, and our fellow board members for all the dedication to this organization and for all the preparation. Thank you. Looking forward to a great meeting.
Thank you, and I second everybody's comments. We'll go on. Turning to the minutes of past meetings, we have for final review and approval are December 3rd, 2024 Quarterly Board Meeting Minutes and February 25th, 2025 Agenda Review Workshop Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action and improve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there... Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Is that everybody, all opposed? Motion carries. Next, the board will receive public comment. Before we begin, I would ask speakers to observe the following ground rules pursuant to our board bylaws. Public comment should be pertinent to board agenda items. Individuals who wish to speak during the public hearing on Agenda Item 9.1 are asked to reserve their comments until the opening of that public hearing. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. If the speaker runs out of time, they are free to submit the remainder of their comments in writing. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Please refrain from comments or behavior that will cause a disruption to the orderly conduct of this meeting. Speakers may ask questions, but please know that board members and FLVS officials are not required to respond. Rather, it is their prerogative to respond. Further, any such responses will be delivered after the public comment period. Any speaker who does not comply with these ground rules may be subject to a warning and potential removal from the meeting. Finally, speakers should note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wished to speak to the board?
Operator, you're on mute.
There are no speakers. Sorry, there are no callers on the line. Please proceed.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment period. The board will now proceed with its public business and turn next to Section 4 of our Agenda for CEO Comments, Reports, and Presentations. Dr. Algais?
Morning, everyone, and thank you once again for your dedication to our organization. Today's CEO Comments, Reports, and Presentations include four agenda items. 4.1, our first item, is the Quarterly Financial Report for the period ending December 31st, 2024. Ms. Corey Wheeler, Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will review the report. Corey?
Thank you, Dr. Algais, and good morning. The charts I will be sharing with you provide a snapshot of our financial information, including year-to-date completions and year-to-date actuels and projections. This will give you an idea of where we stand fiscally. The year-to-date information for completions is presented graphically for the quarter ended December 31st, 2023 prior year and 2024 current year using blue and red bars. Annual revenues and expenditures are also reported as of June 30th, 2024 prior year and June 30th, 2025 using gray and yellow bars. This chart shows the year-to-date completions for three categories: flex, virtual learning lab self-pay, and full-time. For the period ending December 31st, 2024, completions for flex total 247,755, as shown in red, a decrease of 7,938 from the prior year of 255,693, as shown in blue. This reduction is due to the conversion of flex students to scholarship self-pay. Completions for virtual learning lab self-pay for the quarter ended December 31st are 21,678, an increase of 1,555 as compared to 20,123 in the prior year. This is a loss of lab students related to the online course requirement, offset by the increase in scholarship self-pay enrollments. Completions for full-time for the quarter ended December 31st are 40,912, a decrease of 7,642 as compared to the prior year of 48,554. This appears to be due to timing of completions as semester one completions currently show no significant variance year over year. The next chart shows prior year actual completions compared to projected completions for this fiscal year. Actual completions for flex as of June 30th, 2024, where 567,573 is shown in gray, compared to projected completions of 558,000 completions is shown in yellow. While we are hopeful that we will surpass this projection, we are remaining conservative in budgeted completions and associated staffing due to several factors. These include the removal of the online course requirement in the prior year and the expansion of the scholarship program to include... Sorry. To include additional homeschool and private school students who are formerly flex. We are projecting a slight decrease in FTE and virtual learning lab self-pay at year end from 54,168 at June 30th, 2024 to 49,000 at June 30th, 2025. This is the result of a reduction in lab enrollments offset by the increase in scholarship students. We are projecting full-time FTE to remain relatively flat, decreasing from 103,915 at June 30th, 2024 to 103,500 at June 30th, 2025. While the size of FLVS full-time remains unchanged, the timing of completion varies from year to year and causes variability in the forecast. This chart presents revenue and expenditures for the general fund through December 31st for both current and prior year. The general fund is the operating fund of FLVS and includes revenue and expenditures related to flex and full-time. Year-to-date revenues through December 31st increased 11.7 million from 166 million in the prior year, the blue bar, to 177.7 million in the current year, the red bar. Year-to-date expenditures through December 31st have also increased 7.1 million from 165.2 million in the prior year to 172.3 million in the current year. The next chart presents prior year actuels compared to projected current year actuels for the general fund. Revenues at fiscal year-end are expected to increase 344.3 million, the gray bar, in the prior year to 367.6 million in the current year, the yellow bar. This is a result of an increase in FEFP and interest revenue. Year-to-date expenditures are also projected to increase from 328.5 million in the prior year to 347.9 million in the current year. Fund balance is anticipated to increase from 146.1 million to 165.7 million. The next chart indicates revenue and expenditures for the enterprise fund through December 31st for both current and prior year. The enterprise fund consists of FlexPoint, FlexPoint Virtual School, Franchise, and Florida Scholars Academy. Year-to-date revenue for the enterprise fund through December 31st increased 6.1 million from 21.5 million in the prior year, or the blue bar, to 27.6 million in the current year, or the red bar. Year-to-date expenditures through December 31st have increased 9.7 million from 10.7 million in the prior year to 20.4 million in the current year. This increase is related to the Florida Scholars Academy expenditures, which are fully reimbursed. And the last chart presents prior year actuels compared to projected for the enterprise fund at fiscal year-end. Revenues are projected to increase from 42.5 million in the prior year, or the gray bar, to 68.4 million in the current year, or the yellow bar. Year-to-date expenditures are also projected to increase from 29.6 million in the prior year to 56.4 million in the current year. Net operating profit is projected to be 11.9 million, and transfers out are projected to be 8.9 million in fund course development and operating development projects. Fund balance is projected to increase to 80.9 million at June 30th, 2025.
Madam Chair, I would just note for the record that we have now been joined by the good Dr. John Watret.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here. I am here.
Thank you.
Sorry for being late.
I think that concludes the financial report.
Dr. Ad, I believe you're muted. I know you'd like to do that to me.
Trying not to make any noise during her presentation. Thank you, Corey. Please continue with 4.2 to present the Audit of Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2324.
Thank you. Florida law mandates that an audited financial report of Florida Virtual School for each fiscal year, July 1st through June 30th. The report is prepared under generally accepted accounting or generally accepted governmental accounting standards and in accordance with the State Board of Education accounting requirements. I would like to introduce Mr. Bill Blend of Forvis Mazzars, formerly MSLPA, who will present key financial highlights for the 2324 fiscal year.
Thank you very much for the introduction. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. As noted, Bill Blend, Forvis Mazzars, your external auditor, here to present to you the results of the financial statement audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. You know, first and foremost, want to thank staff for the hard work that they do in getting through the audit process. It's arduous. It happens once a year. It requires them to do things outside the normal course of day-to-day business. We have always had good and full cooperation from staff, and that continued again this year. Specifically, I'd like to highlight the work of Lisa Hester, who's our main contact in the audit process. You know, she's the one that we bug on a regular basis for requests and, you know, get us information and then follow up and things like that. And she coordinates the audit process, so I want to give her a big thanks. I'd also like to introduce our senior auditor on the engagement, Grant White, who's with me today. I don't know if he's with the video. I can't tell whose faces we can see and who we can't, but I just want to give him the credit on our side, really doing the day-to-day work. And I get to sit here and take credit for. Couple of things we need to do today is, you know, cover the required communications, which was part of your board agenda. And then I'll go through the audit reports. You certainly got a more current financial state, financial information highlights. Generally, that's the kind of thing I would normally do in a presentation. However, I want to always reiterate to the board, to governance, because we work directly for you, that if, you know, I don't... If you have any questions beyond today or any time during the year and you want to reach out to me or Grant or anybody on the audit team, please feel free to do so. We always want to be available to you, be responsive to you. So I don't mean to go through anything quickly. I understand the importance of the financial information presented to you in the financial audit report, which you had as part of your agenda. I will open it up for questions when I'm done with my presentations. But again, I just want to reiterate, one, we work for you, and two, we're always available should you have any additional questions. With that, you did receive our required communications document. Again, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to peruse that. High level, that just kind of goes through our responsibilities as your auditors, staff and management's responsibility to respond to our audit request. As I alluded to, we got full cooperation. We didn't have any issues during the audit. We performed our audit in accordance with all the audit standards. And so with that, I don't have anything else to add generally as it relates to the communications other than asking, are there specific questions related to those required communications? Okay. With that, I'll move into the audit reports. And so you'll find on pages 1 through 3 of the document or PDF pages 4 through 6, the Independent Auditor's Report, which is the audit report on the financial information. We performed our services in accordance with the standards and are pleased to let you know that we have provided you with what we identify as an unmodified opinion, meaning that there were no changes to the financial information as presented to us for audit. And the information presented in the financial statements, as well as the notes, was audited by us and, to the best of our knowledge, from a materiality standpoint, is properly presented to you. And that's usually what most people are obviously significantly concerned with. Then the second item, which we get into the government audit standards, is our report on internal controls. We didn't... We don't audit internal controls. We evaluate internal controls for the purposes of planning our audit, so identifying risk areas. We did that, and during that process and that evaluation, we did not come across any issues to bring to your attention. So in essence, no findings as it relates to internal controls. So again, what we would identify as a clean report. The next report, and by the way, that report's on page 69 and 70 or PDF pages 72 and 73, if you're scrolling. The Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance Over Your Federal Programs, so the federal grants that you received, you can find on pages 71 through 73 or PDF pages 74 through 76. And again, we audited the major programs identified on the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost, and we did not have any issues in auditing compliance with those programs. So again, another clean report. The next item, which is a requirement in the state of Florida, is our Independent Accountants' Report on your compliance with the Florida statute related to investment policy. And you were in compliance with that statute. And then the last one, again, and this is really required by the Florida Auditor General for the auditing rules within the state of Florida, is the Management Letter, which goes through various items and kind of reiterates a lot of things that I've already pointed out to you. And again, happy to report to you that there were no findings this year. And so generally with that, I would now open it up for any questions about the audit reports or the financial statements. Hearing none, I assume you may want to take an action on this as it relates to acceptance. And then I'll let you get on to the business of the day, if you don't have anything else for me.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Corey. This is an update that the board receives. There is no action on this item. Next up, we're going to have Ms. Beth Brunner, Executive Director of the FLVS Foundation. She'll share with you the FLVS Foundation's March 2025 Quarterly Report. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Algais, and good morning, board members. For this foundation quarterly report, I will provide an abbreviated overview of our programs. We have three months remaining in our Consortium for Florida Education Foundations matching grant programs for the year. All reports outlining each of our programs' progress and success have been accepted by the consortium. Last week, the foundation launched year three of our STEM camps, providing our 4th and 5th graders with a free week-long camp at Starbase in Orlando. There will be two more additional free camps in June, one for 5th and 6th graders and another for 7th and 8th graders. We are hoping to have an additional camp at Patrick Space Force Base in Brevard County. This program is part of an MOU with the National Center for Simulation. For our transitioning Florida Scholars Academy students, laptops are being provided by the foundation to approve students who will be continuing with FLVS flex programs. We will have four FLVS student interns working at Lockheed Martin in Clearwater beginning June 1st. This FLVS internship program will be expanded to include other industries. Data is collected from each of the foundation's programs to monitor progress and make changes as needed. The foundation provides funding to FLVS to support project management for certain programs. This slide provides an overview of how the foundation's programs link to FLVS goals, benefiting students and staff. We hope to be able to support the FLVS Industry Council to expand internships in concert with providing our students with career opportunities. On September 1 of this year, we will again provide matching funds of approximately 105,000 for our consortium grant. The assistance of the Board of Trustees and Foundation Board is greatly appreciated. The foundation also requires outside funding to support our operations, staff, external legal, and CPA. With our collection of data on our Laptop for Learner Program, we have seen a large uptick in applications from both full-time and FLEX students. This week, we will be sending approximately 90 laptops to students in need, most relying on a laptop from the foundation to continue school with FLVS. Based on our calculations, this program provides an avenue for students to continue online learning and provides revenue to FLVS. We do continue to hear from parents about the importance of safety of their students. More than 50% indicate that this is a primary concern. All board members and FLVS staff are invited to the foundation's May 29th special reception showcasing FLVS and hopefully FSA student art entitled "A Universe of Possibilities" being held at the Orlando Science Center. We always welcome any leads on potential sponsors who support our students. Thank you all for your continued support. This concludes the foundation quarterly report.
Thank you, Beth. Right. For Section 4.4, Student Highlights, we'll highlight some of our students and end with one of our works of art stories. Before we go into a handful of student accomplishments, I want to share with you that earlier this month, our Student Service Administrator, Dr. Amy Hall, was honored for outstanding community impact during the 2025 Women's History Luncheon, sponsored by the Falcon Hope Center at Daytona State College. Dr. Hall is a champion for our students academically, and she fosters a culture of resilience that extends into every aspect of their lives. Congratulations, Dr. Hall. Well-deserved honor. Moving into student accomplishments, Senior Alex Lopez was recently awarded first place in the 2024 U.S. District Court High School Essay Contest. His essay advocates for a balanced and ethical approach toward the use of artificial intelligence in education. Congratulations to Alex on a very timely project. Next, 8th grade student Ruby Sellers is representing FLVS at this year's Art in the Capitol. Her artwork titled Chili Bunny is being displayed at the Capitol during this year's Florida Legislative Session. Congratulations to Ruby and a special shout-out to all the students who submitted artwork. Next, 11th grader Cadence Oswald is training for the 2028 Summer Olympics. Through FLVS, she's able to balance her education and her passion for sailing. Because of the flexibility FLVS provides, middle-schooler Makey Rowe, he can dedicate his time to his favorite sport, soccer. He was scouted by the Orlando City Soccer Academy and recently played in a tournament in Grand Canary Islands. In honor of National Read Across America Day, which was March 2nd, Claire Reynosa, a brave and enthusiastic FLVS 3rd grader, shared why she loves reading and showed off her favorite reading spot. Claire said she enjoys reading, especially mystery books. I do too, Claire, because it's like an adventure in your head. And I completely agree. And on March 14th, 13th, of our Florida Virtual Elementary School students participated in a field trip to Wahoo Bay and Educational Marine Park in Pompano Beach. Through hands-on activities such as snorkeling, students learned the importance of keeping our oceans and reefs safe and healthy. Students, parents, and staff truly enjoyed the experience. And we want to thank Mr. Canarans, our board member, who unfortunately is not here today, but for providing this opportunity to our students and for his sponsorship of them. And our last item is our Works of Heart Story. Cultivating strong relationships with our school partners is key to fostering mutual success and creating an optimal learning environment. Lilian Lorenzo, manager of the Blended Learning Operations and Implementation, seeks ways to enhance access to educational opportunities for all children, regardless of their backgrounds.
So Lilian is one of our blended learning managers. Our team receives a lot of different information from the teachers that are actually working with the students. Something as meaningful as it cannot find a student to an entire classroom that is having technology issues, Lilian is the one that answers those calls.
The first time we met her, she came, you know, she wanted to see the room and the students. And she was a little surprised. It's not like your ordinary student. Most of these kids in this neighborhood drop out of school. So you have 3rd, 4th graders that don't finish the year.
Most of our families are low-income. They come with nothing. And Lilian Lorenzo, she came to pay our school a visit to see how the kids were doing.
While visiting this school, we walked in and saw a great need for these kids. Most of these kids are first-time students to the United States.
Their parents work from 6:00 in the morning to 8:00 o'clock at night. They go back home without food. They come to school with the same clothing.
How are they going to get through the day without shoes that fit them or pencils that have lead in them? You know, she saw the need that this community was in, and she took immediate action. She organized a drive to ensure that the students had all the tools that they need to succeed in school and feel a sense of dignity and belonging.
She called me. She's like, are you available today? I'm coming down here. And I'm like, okay. I didn't... I really wasn't expecting her. We get a lot of people that come in and say, oh, we're going to donate, and they don't. And she surprised us.
She had a trunk full of items. So when I say trunk, I don't want you to think of like a little car. It was a huge SUV, the seats all down in the back, and it's just full of items for the students.
School supplies, book bags, clothes for them, their parents, family members, games and toys and balls and jump ropes, hula hoops.
The students had to help her bring down all of the stuff that she gave them, and their eyes just lit up. One of them pulled out a Spider-Man shirt and was like, oh, my gosh, Spider-Man is my favorite. It encouraged them, encouraged the students to keep being motivated, to wanting to learn.
This drive is able to provide those children the proper environment for them to learn and grow as a child and as a student.
It was just really great to hear from the students. They created little thank-you notes and cards.
It gave them another reason to get up and go to school the next day because they didn't have to worry about something because Lilian was able to provide it to them.
She's built a wonderful relationship with her labs and has created the space, you know, not only for them to trust her, but they know that they can rely on her support and guidance to ensure that their labs are successful.
But when Lilian walks through the door, it just makes everyone smile.
Everything that Lilian does in her position is to ensure that the students are successful. She's just really committed, and she is brilliant at what she does.
I can't think of anyone more deserving of this honor than my friend Lilian. So congratulations, Lilian. You deserve this and so much more.
We thank Lilian for going above and beyond for our students, their families, and our school partners. Lilian's story is just one of council's inspiring moments that occur daily within our organization. Our teachers and support staff are amazing. This concludes the CEO report. I turn it back over to you, Chair Ryder.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions for Dr. Algais? Thank you. We will now move to our consent agenda items at Sections 5 and 6 of our agenda. Dr. Algais, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. We have three proposed consent contract agenda items for the board's consideration and approval. 5.1 is an increase in contract spend authority. 5.2 is the annual benefits program approval. And 5.3 is FLVS employee contract templates. For consent annual reports and forms, we present and propose four reports for approval as consent agenda items. 6.1 is a 25 through 28 district English language learners or ELL plan. 6.2 is for the approval of reappointment of FLVS Foundation Board of Director members, Ms. Monica Gardoni and Mr. Mike Biller. Item 6.3 is our FLVS Quarterly Staff Data Report. Item 6.4 is for the disposal of assets, and we request the approval of the recommended actions for 5.1 through 5.3 and 6.1 through 6.4.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there an omnibus motion to adopt and approve the recommended actions on consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.3 and 6.1 through 6.4?
Motion?
Is there a second?
I can't... I'm not sure whether...
I couldn't hear it. I couldn't hear it. I think there was, but I'm just making sure.
First, I guess Dr. Algais would be the motion, and Dr. Watret could be the second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to the discussion items set out in today's agenda. Dr. Algais, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. We have five financial items for the board's proposed discussion agenda. I welcome back Ms. Cory Wheeler to present these items.
Thank you. Item seven point one is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget amendment number three. The purpose of this proposed budget amendment is to recognize and approve updates to the ending fund balance of the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund in the FLVS fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five annual budget, which reflects revised estimated revenues and appropriations impacting each such fund. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the General Fund is a net decrease of ninety-six thousand six hundred, changing from one hundred and twenty-nine point three million to one hundred and twenty-nine point two million. Revenue increased by three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and appropriations increased by nearly four hundred and thirty-five thousand. There is no fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the Special Revenue Fund as revenues equal expenditures. Revenues and appropriations decreased by twenty-two thousand. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the Internal Service Fund is a net increase of one point six million, changing from twenty-seven point three million to twenty-eight point nine million. There was no change in revenue, and appropriations decreased by one point six million. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the Enterprise Fund is a net increase of two point five million, changing from seventy point seven million to seventy-three point two million. Revenues decreased by two point two million, and appropriations decreased by four point six six million. Thank you. I now turn it back to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Cory. We request your approval on the recommended action on item seven point one.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item seven point one? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Wait, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cory, back to you for seven point two.
Seven point two covers the FLVS twenty-five twenty-six Omnibus Salary Schedule. This agenda item is to request the approval of an omnibus salary schedule, including FLVS support staff, instructional administration staff, instructional staff, FlexPoint staff, information technology staff, Florida Scholars Academy staff, and all other FLVS personnel for the twenty-five twenty-six fiscal year. If approved, the Omnibus Salary Schedule will become effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Back to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Cory. We request your approval on the recommended action on item seven point two.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item seven point two?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you. Cory, please proceed with item seven point three.
Seven point three is the Instructional Personnel Compensation Adjustment. The purpose of this request is to award and recognize the continuous years of FLVS service of our instructional personnel by implementing a compensation adjustment, which increases the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six annual base as follow. Instructional personnel with five to nine years of service as of July first, twenty twenty-five will receive one thousand dollars. Instructional personnel with ten to fourteen years of service as of July first, twenty twenty-five will receive two thousand dollars. Instructional personnel with fifteen or more years of service as of July first, twenty twenty-five will receive three thousand dollars. If approved, the adjustment will be effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Cory. We request your approval of the recommended actions on item seven point three.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item seven point three?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cory, back to you for seven point four, Performance Pay Plan for Eligible Support Staff.
Thank you. As Dr. Algais mentioned, seven point four is the Performance Pay Plan for Eligible Support Staff. We are recommending a Performance Pay Plan for eligible FLVS support staff who are rated as highly effective on their twenty-five twenty-six fiscal year evaluations and who are not included in the Florida Teacher Salary Increase Allocation, the FlexPoint Sales Performance Pay Plan, or any other previously approved plan. To be eligible to receive the five thousand dollar performance pay, the support staff employee must receive only effective or highly effective ratings in all annual evaluation components and must receive a summative rating of highly effective on the twenty-five twenty-six annual evaluation based on clear, measurable, and objective key performance indicators that use data to support success. In addition, the support staff employee must be in good standing and employed at FLVS as of the date of the FLVS distribution of the performance payment funds. We will include this in the proposed fiscal year twenty-six twenty-seven budget for payment to those eligible once evaluations are finalized. Back to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Cory. We request your approval of the recommended action on item seven point four.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item seven point four?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cory, please present the final finance item.
Seven point five is the FlexPoint Sales Performance Pay Plan for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six. In this agenda item, we are proposing a Performance Pay Plan for FlexPoint Sales Personnel. It has been developed to drive national business and increase return on investment to the organization. I now turn it back over to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Cory. We request your approval of the recommended action on item seven point five.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item seven point five?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, we have a number of proposed FLVS board policies, policy revisions, and repeals for first reading, and we will request the board's authorization to publish the text and provide public notice of a hearing on these proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals. Karen Chastain, our Deputy General Counsel, will review these for you.
Good morning. This agenda item proposes thirty-three policies for first reading. There are six proposed new policies, eighteen proposed amendments to existing policies, and nine proposed repeals of FLVS legacy policies. I'll give a brief overview of the proposed policies by category. There are seven items regarding employees. Five of these items are proposed new policies and two are proposed amendments. The proposed new policies have corresponding repeals of FLVS legacy policies, and these are policies one-one-three-zero through one-three-six-two, which are listed as exhibits two through six in the agenda item. The proposed amendments are policies one-one-one-three and one-four-three-zero-point-oh-five. The next category, there are three items regarding FLVS programs, all of which are amendments and are based on State Board of Education rule updates. These proposed amendments are to policies two-four-two-one, two-four-two-three, and two-four-five-five. Next, there are eight items regarding students, all of which are amendments and are either based on State Board of Education rule updates or these are amendments initiated within FLVS for continuous improvements. These proposed amendments are policies five-four-one-zero-point-oh-one through five-seven-eight-zero, which are listed as exhibits eleven through eighteen in the agenda item. Next, there is one amendment proposed for policy seven-five-four-zero to update the FLVS Acceptable Use Policy. Next, there is one amendment and one new policy proposed for operations. Each of these relates to school safety. The proposed amendment is to policy eight-four-zero-five and is based on State Board of Education updates. The proposed new policy is eight-four-zero-six. Last, we propose amendments to three Board of Trustees bylaws. The proposed amendment to Bylaw two point five adds updated language for federal grants based on recent Edgar updates relating to ethical conduct. The proposed amendment to Bylaw three point two updates the reference to FLVS Headquarters, which was formerly known as the VLC. And last, the proposed amendment to Bylaw three point five provides updated language relating to the conduct or behavior of persons attending the board meetings. Please let me know if you have any questions. Hearing none. Back to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Karen. Madam Chair, we request your approval on the recommended action on eight point one.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt and approve the recommended action on item eight point one?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to the board's consideration of the proposed policy and policy revision set for public hearing at section nine of our agenda. I'm going to go back and reread public comments. The public comment rules before we go on to the nine point one. Before we begin, I would ask speakers to observe the following ground rules pursuant to our board bylaws. Public comments should be pertinent to board agenda items. Individuals who wish to speak during the public hearing on agenda item nine point one are asked to reserve their comments until the opening of that public hearing. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. If the speaker runs out of time, they are free to submit the remainder of their comments in writing. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Please refrain from comments or behavior that will cause a disruption to the orderly conduct of this meeting. Speakers may ask questions, but please know that board members and FLVS officials are not required to respond. Rather, it is their prerogative to respond. Further, any such responses will be delivered after the public comment period. Any speaker who does not comply with these ground rules may be subject to a warning and potential removal from the meeting. Finally, speakers should note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Thank you. Now for nine point one. Let me. As board chair, I hereby open the public hearing on agenda item nine point one, Proposed FLVS Board Policies, Policy Revisions, and Repeals. Rather than retaking roll call, I will note for the record that co-chair Arza and board members Pizzoli, Radcliffe, and Watret are also in attendance at this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to discharge the board's obligations under Florida law and to provide for the greatest degree of transparency pertaining to the development and adoption of FLVS board policies. The subject of this hearing is the board's consideration and potential adoption of changes to its policies. The board earlier authorized publication of the entire text of the proposed policies and repeals before us today, and it also directed public notice of the date and time of this public hearing. Now, having been duly and publicly noticed in accordance with Florida law, the proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals are before the board for further consideration and final action. Specifically, we are asked to adopt the proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals described and attached to agenda item nine point one. Accordingly, the board will take a public comment at this time, and speakers are reminded to observe the speaker ground rules to which I earlier referred. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board on agenda items?
We have one caller on the line. Caller, if you'd like to comment at this time, please press star one on your telephone keypad now. We will pause for just a quick moment to allow the caller to respond. Caller, your line is open. Please proceed.
Oh, good morning.
Morning.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Okay, oh, fine. I actually, I've been trying to speak for about forty minutes. At the initial public comment period, by the time I was asked on the phone for my name, it had passed, even though I was on the line. I had been emailing everybody on the board. So I would like to speak, just not on this nine point one item.
So.
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, this is David Dag, the general counsel. My comment is directed to you, Madam Chair, that you have the discretion to allow a comment pursuant to the public comment section. Although comments really ought to be salient to nine point one, having heard that there were complications or timing errors, it is left to your discretion, Chair Ryder, if you would like this gentleman to speak.
Yes, definitely. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I have actually prepared a statement that fits within the two-minute parameter. Hold on one second. It just disappeared really quick here. But I have it. Okay, now I have it on my phone. Okay. Good morning, Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. I'm Pavel Menzel, father of two daughters in their second year at this school. I'm raising a critical issue I've documented and discussed across all levels of FLVS for almost two years. The curriculum department is dominated by radical woke activism. Even today, the Florida Virtual School curriculum strategically replaces the benchmarks for excellent student thinking best with parallel standards focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI, social-emotional learning, SEL, critical race theory, CRT, and pervasive woke ideology, driven by an industry and nonprofits in other states that design content to superficially align with Florida standards while subverting them. Somehow, it's infiltrated every part of your program. As parent, I'm worried about its effect on my daughter's education. I flagged this repeatedly and now ask the board to scrutinize what's taught and who shapes it. We need to focus on real learning, not ideology, because if this isn't addressed, FLVS risks losing all federal funding under President Donald Trump's January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five executive order, ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling. That was my statement. I thought that was about two minutes. I just liked saying that last executive order name.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thirty seconds left.
I think I heard.
I don't hear anything.
Dr. Daggett, what were you gonna say?
I think I heard the caller close his statement, and now we can proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you for your comments. This concludes the public comment portion of this hearing. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Dr. Algais, do you have any comments before I take up?
Well, we do request your approval of the recommended action on nine point one.
Okay. Is there an omnibus motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item nine point one?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we have our General Counsel comments, reports, and presentations. I turn it over to Dr. Daggett.
I just wanted to give a shout out to our board member Cornarans for the Wahoo Bay thing that we just saw. It was just really cool, awesome experience, not only for the students, but I heard it was a great experience with the staff, too, which was just terrific. And of course, I had to register my thanks while he's not here. Okay, yeah. And I'd also like to thank the board members, and just for the public to be aware, this is certainly not a rubber-stamp board, okay? There are plenty of preparations, time study that go into these meetings by every one of these board members, and our board workshops really help to that effect. So I wanted to thank everyone for their hard work in preparing. And that's all I've got. Dr. Al.
Thank you, Dr. Daggett. I want to echo that. Our board members are volunteers. They're a completely voluntary board, and they give up their time, and a lot of time they give up in order to get prepared for these meetings individually and in groups. So I'd like to thank them on behalf again of our families, our students, and our staff. We sincerely appreciate your continued support, your dedication. And if you need any assistance, as always, I'm a phone call away. Please reach out to me, anything that you have or need. And if you need any assistance, as always, I'm a phone call away. Please reach out to me, anything that you have or need.
Thank you, Dr. Daggett, and thank you for, to Dr. Algais. That was your closing remarks, I'm assuming, right?
Oh, yes, and I just thank Dr. Daggett for Dr. Algais.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Okay.
You don't need to thank me for him.
All right. Finally, I will open the floor to our co-chair and fellow board members for any closing remarks. Dr. Arza.
No closing remarks this time. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Pizzoli.
Yes, I wanted to personally thank Dr. Daggett for just being himself. So then just leave that alone.
Board member Radcliffe.
Just said it is an absolute pleasure and privilege to serve on this board. Above all, not just this great organization, but really all the families and the students and the teachers that we serve. So it's truly a privilege to be here. Thank you for a great meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Watret, we're happy to see you.
Yeah, thank you and apologize for the late. Yeah, I mean, the preparation, everything is done by the staff members. And you know, the quality of the education that we're providing to our students out there. Online education is different, but it serves a need for many, many students that gain access to high school diploma and other education through online and able to pursue many things such as the testimonials and the highlights that was offered students and seeing how they're taking advantage of it. They're continuing to do sports and other activities while pursuing their education and getting their high school education. So a credit to everyone that's involved in it and a credit to my fellow board members for the support that they provide to FLVS. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to make a note that I wanted to, I wanted to thank the financial, the team that did the financial audit and how successful that was and how well they did in it. We didn't really talk about it at the moment, but congratulations to all of them for an amazing audit and perfect audit. And I also wanted to thank board member Cornarans for that, for what he did for those students. But you took it away from me, but I'm going to say it anyway because I can't help it. But yeah, thank you for the preparation for the meeting and thank you to my fellow board members. It's a very, this is a very interesting board that there's a lot of respect for each other and we get a lot done. And a lot's done before this actual meeting by staff and they do an amazing job. So thank you to all of them. So now, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second?
Nobody wants to leave.
Second.
Nobody wants to leave.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
I knew it would be board member Puzzoli, yes.
I can stay all day and talk to all of you if you want. I enjoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes the quarterly meeting of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. I want to thank everyone once again for a job well done. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks to everyone.